All right, the time is now six oh four. Like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Galt City Council for Tuesday, September the seventh, two thousand and twenty one. Due to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic emergency, we have to continue to conduct our city council meetings much differently than we usually do for the protection of the public and our city staff. I'm now going to ask our city manager, Mr. Heinz, to give a brief explanation to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Lorenzo Heinz, City Manager. Good evening. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted by teleconference slash video conference in compliance with the state and county stay at home orders and as allowed by the governor's executive order N dash twenty nine dash twenty, which allows for a deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. Members of the public will see the council members and city staff who are appearing via a remote video slash telephone connections. City council meetings will be held virtually by teleconference or video conference only until further notice. Today's agenda states that rather than attending in person, residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org. Prior to the council meeting, any written comments that were received will be read out loud during the city council meeting by the city clerk on the appropriate agenda item, subject to the customary five minute time limit unless the same individual also appears and requests to speak live during the council meeting. We will take the live comments first and then the written comments will be read out loud. We are also using the Zoom webinar format, which allows the public to provide live public comment. Members of the public may use the link to enter the webinar as attendees. They should be able to use the raise their hand option in the Zoom webinar to let us know if they would like to speak and should do so when the mayor announces the time for general public comment or when a specific agenda item is called if your comment concerns an agenda, an item on the agenda. We request, as we typically do at in-person council meetings, that speakers provide their name and address when they're called on. However, doing so is not required. Attendees should also see the lower hand feature if they change their minds and do not want to speak. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments on that topic.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, and now I'll call the meeting to order. Ms. Huber, can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Yeah.
Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. Before we do our silent prayers tonight, I'd like to ask Mr. Heinz to make a statement on her behalf. Mr. Heinz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On August twenty second, two thousand and twenty one, Galt Police Department Officer Hermione Graywall and Officer Capri Herrera were involved in a collision on Highway ninety nine while on their way to assist with the Caldoire fire in El Dorado County. Officer Herrera was released from the hospital last Friday and is recovering well. Officer Graywall succumbed to his injuries on August twenty second, or I'm sorry, August twenty six, two thousand and twenty one. Funeral services to honor the memory and sacrifice of Officer Hermione Graywall will be held on Monday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty one, at ten a.m. at the Bayside Church Adventure Campus, six four zero one Stanford Ranch Road, Roseville, California. Nine, five, six, seven, eight. It is customary for law enforcement to honor an officer who dies in the line of duty with a funeral that includes the community in which they served. A law enforcement procession will immediately follow the service. We encourage the community to show their support by lining the sidewalks of the procession route. Additional details regarding the funeral and procession will be posted on the Galt PDs and the City of Galt social media pages and website in days to come. The community's continued support during this time is very much appreciated. I ask that we observe a moment of silence to acknowledge the great sacrifice both of these officers have made for our community and the Galt Police Department. Please join me now in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. If you'd now all join us in a salute to our flag. Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Ms. Hubert, if you would like to do our replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Mitchell Cable fourteen, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at www.sacmitl cable dot TV. Today's meeting will air Friday, September tenth at nine a.m. and Saturday, September eleventh at nine a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube dot com forward slash Mitchell Cable fourteen.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item B, agenda approval additions and/or deletions. Do I have anything from the council? Okay, Mr. Heinz?
Yes, Ms. Mayor Farmer, we were, our friends at Cow Waste weren't able to provide the materials for their presentation under item D presentations, and so we're going to push that presentation until September twenty first. And so we'll just have one presentation by the Galt Community of Character Coalition, and the subject matter tonight will be respect. I know integrity is listed on the agenda, but the subject matter tonight will be respect.
All right, thank you, sir. So moving on to item C, our public comment. Do we have any hands raised online this evening, Rose?
We do have one hand raised.
Okay, go ahead.
From Mary Magga.
Good evening, Mary, go ahead.
Mary. Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Pastor Mary Magga. I have the privilege of serving the people of Galt at the Galt United Methodist Church that is at the corner of C and Sixth Street, and we are so proud to be part of the historic downtown area and serving the people of Galt for over a hundred and fifty years. So I'm just here because I'm feeling like we're all very sorrowful over the loss that our community has experienced, and I just want to tell you some good news, which is that for the last nearly a year, the people of Galt UMC, even though we're a small church, we're only a hundred people large, have got it in our minds and in our hearts that we would like to do something about the two empty lots that we own at the corner of Sixth and B, and that we would also like to do more in terms of our Sunshine Food Pantry, which, as you can imagine during this time of pandemic, has been essential in the lives of senior citizens as well as the working poor of our community. So I'm just letting you know that we've got a developer that's interested in developing affordable, high-density housing for seniors and veterans with our two lots, maybe combined with the lot that they're looking at at four oh one Lincoln, and that it is our intention as a church to take whatever money, the whole lot of the money from the lots, and put it into trying to build a freestanding Sunshine Food Pantry and Resource Center on the lot that currently has our church offices, kind of a dilapidated house, and to make that something that will really be an asset to the downtown historic area. And so I'm not here to make any kind of formal request or make a formal presentation. I just want you to know that we've talked to some of you individually, and we're excited about an opportunity to do something with our property, because with all the energy that's being put into beautifying C Street, I hate to have property that I've been blessed to be at least in charge of as terms of being a pastor. I hate to have those empty lots sitting there when there is such a need for housing and when there is such a need for us continuing to support the seniors and the working poor of our community. So just wanted to let you know, things will be coming your way eventually. In the meantime, please feel free to reach out to me, I'm the pastor, and of course, you're welcome to worship with us as well at the United Methodist Church, and I, I'm grateful to all of you for your service to the community. I've, I've been in Galt off and on for ten years, but I was appointed here just over a year ago, and I've been very impressed with the civic leadership, so thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Councilmember Lozano, you have a question?
No, I don't have a question. I just have a comment for Pastor Magga. Thank you for what you do in our community, you and your congregation, as well as your service on our youth commission just recently, and we do appreciate all that you're doing and your interest in the, in our city and our citizens of our city. And so thank you for reaching out through other, other folks to, to brief me specifically on, on what your plans are, and I, I do appreciate that, and I thank you and your congregation for your work.
You're, you're very welcome, Rich. It's a privilege to serve in Galt, and the bishop of the United Methodist Church sent me to Galt because she felt like it was a city that could really use the energy that I have to help, to help build up connection between church and civic authorities, and so feels like it's a good match.
Thank you, Mary. And thank you for meeting with me as well. I know you've met with some of us, so I appreciate the information, thank you.
You're, you're welcome, anytime.
Do we have any additional hands raised online, Rose?
There are no additional hands raised online.
Tina, do we have any written public comment?
No comment.
Okay, without further ado, we'll move on to item D, presentations. Our first presentation tonight is going to be from the Galt Community of Character Coalition, and the item tonight is going to be respect. Going to ask Mr. Ralph Cortez for the presentation.
Mr. Cortez is not online at this time, so I'm going to go ahead and let Gail Weber in if she wants to give the presentation.
Okay.
Excuse me, hold on one second. I apologize, so Ralph Cortez. We'll start it off.
Can you hear it?
We can hear you.
Okay, and can you see us?
We have no video, but we can hear you.
Okay, okay. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Galt City Council and city staff. My name is Ralph Cortez, Vice President of the Galt Community of Character Coalition. For those of you who may not be familiar with the GCCC, we are a Galt community-based organization, five oh one C for nonprofit, in existence since two thousand and seven. Barbara Payne and Sue Roberts were two of the founding leaders of the organization. Our mission is to create community culture based on values, goodwill, and commonly accepted character traits by inspiring individuals, families, and organizations to take responsibility for their choices and actions, by motivating individuals, families, and organizations to make a difference in the world around them, and by recognizing individuals, families, and organizations for modeling the accepted community character traits. Every other month, a different character trait is selected on a community-wide basis. We hope our citizens will help us identify those who demonstrate these character traits so we can honor them and tell their stories. The six selected traits include integrity, honesty, respect, pride in the community, responsibility, and caring and compassion. Tonight, I'm here with Mary Martinez and Gail Weber to present our two thousand and twenty one Galt Respect Award to three outstanding individuals who are nominated by community members as role models of respect. Respect is recognized in those whose actions may include the following: those who demonstrate respect and affirm the basic dignity of each person; those who demonstrate due regard for the feeling, wishes, and concerns of others; those who listen to what others have to say, work to help address their concerns, and validate their contributions. Our first Galt Respect Award goes to Michelin Farrell. Michelin Farrell is a fifth grade teacher at Marengo Ranch Elementary School, was a true role model of the character trait respect. She demonstrates respect in the way she constantly supports her students and coworkers. She is always looking for ways she can help others. During the difficult days of the pandemic, Mrs. Farrell embodied respect in helping students and coworkers. She was mindful of the needs of students when she so generously supplied distance learners with materials they needed to succeed. She also met the needs of coworkers by helping them navigate Google Classroom so they could be effective to meet our students' needs. Mrs. Farrell constantly goes above and beyond in making sure those around her have the tools they need to be successful and comfortable. Michelin Farrell is a role model of respect and a true asset to our Galt community, and she was nominated by Mary Lane. Next, I'm going to move on to Mary Martinez, who announced the second winner.
Okay, our second winner for the Respect Award is Linda Extrum. During the difficult days of the pandemic, Linda Extrum went above and beyond to create a joyful, enriched, distance-learning environment for TK and kindergarten children from Lake Canyon Elementary School. During normal times, we expect our young children to gather on the classroom carpet each day to establish routines and learn about the calendar and weather, and to come together as a community of learners who care for each other and enjoy learning. Meeting this goal during the pandemic may have seemed impossible. However, Mrs. Extrum's students were able to experience that similar comfort of celebrating each day with their teacher and friends through the routines and activities and surprises Mrs. Extrum created for the class. While her young children were not familiar with watching a Zoom lesson on a computer or using a computer for structured lessons, Mrs. Extrum demonstrated respect and patience for each young learner by presenting well-planned, structured, and fun activities to make learning accessible for each child. As a parent, I was amazed and grateful to have Mrs. Extrum Zoom into my home each day and bring joy and learning to my child and to her classmates. Mrs. Extrum is truly a master teacher whose respect and caring for each child and family propels the work she does to a whole new level. Linda Extrum is clearly a role model of the character trait respect. The Galt community is so fortunate to have Linda Extrum as a teacher for our children, and she was nominated by Julie White. And next, Gail Weber will present our third Respect Award.
It is with great joy that I nominate Mr. Mark King as the ultimate Galt role model for respect. I have known him for a year in his capacity as president of Sunshine Rotary and as an ongoing volunteer with our Sunshine Food Pantry, which distributes food to our poorest citizens twice a month. I mentioned that I have known him for a year because he is a big reason why I have fallen in love with Galt. As an appointed pastor in the United Methodist Church, our bishop sends us to serving communities not known to us previously. Mr. King was one of the first community members that I met. His caring, his kindness, his enthusiasm for service, his openness to everyone were shining bright as he worked through the pandemic to make sure everyone got the food they needed. But it is more than that. The respect he shows to everyone is inspirational. He has learned conversational Spanish so he can show respect for the heritage of our Spanish-speaking and bilingual citizens. He learns the names of our Sunshine Food Pantry patrons. He knows their lives and their loves, and will ask by name after sick relatives. He anticipates the physical needs of people who need help getting things to their cars. His laughter is contagious. He works with young people through Interact, the Young People's Branch of Rotary. He is serving on an exploratory committee to build affordable housing for seniors and veterans in Galt. He brings food to the homeless on a regular basis through a Sikh temple. He recently helped an elderly woman from our church to put in a doggy door. No job is too big or too small for Mark King. His kindness, humility, and steadfast devotion to building community shine through every action, every email, every text, every word. In the year I have known him, I have watched Mr. King interact with every variety of person, and he has always shown respect and gratitude. Mr. King is a lifelong learner who is constantly curious and open to learning from others. In short, Mark King is the joy. As a pastor, love thy neighbor is at the heart of what I believe and teach. Mark King truly loves his neighbor. I cannot think of a more worthy recipient or of a more shining example with the kind of person and citizen that makes Galt special. Nominated by Mary Magga, she is the United Methodist pastor. And that's our three nominations for the award of respect.
All right, thank you, Ms. Weber and Mr. Cortez.
Thank you, everyone. That was amazing and very hard to hear, but beautiful in its own right and means the world to me. I love this town.
Thank you, Mr. King. Does Miss Extrum or Miss Farrell want to say a word or two?
Oh, I would just like to say thank you. I appreciate it, and I'm humbled by the company that has joined me receiving this award as well, and I appreciate the coalition.
Thank you. Miss Extrum, would you like to say a word? All right, I'm not sure if she can hear me, but, well, on behalf of the city council, we'd like to congratulate Miss Farrell, Miss Extrum, and Mr. King for this prestigious award, and it's a great honor to be, be thought of by your peers for, for such an important trait as respect. So for me and the council, congratulations on that.
Thank you very much.
Anything else from the coalition you'd like to add? Actually, Mr. Lozano has his hand up, go ahead.
You're muted, Rich. Wow, I will get the unmute button down, even if it takes another year. I, I just wanted to say that of the three, I know Mr. King personally, and, and not only is he a great, great person and very involved in the community in different, different ways, he's also a great leader of Rotary, and he just does an awesome job leading meetings and, and having vision for, for the Rotary Group, who meets every, every Friday morning at seven o'clock, and Mr. King does just such an awesome job. So two, two things real quick, someone acknowledge him and his leadership, and then also invite anybody that's interested to come to one of our Rotary meetings on Zoom at seven o'clock on Friday.
Absolutely.
Information, let me know. Shameless plug there, Mark.
Thanks, Rich.
Hi. This is Linda Extrum, I was on mute, sorry. I just wanted to say thank you very much, and teaching is my passion and my joy, so thank you.
No, thank you. Councilmember Vandenberg, give a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank all three of, of the, all three of them for being a bright spot in our community. It's an honor to have you part of this community, and you are the glue that actually makes it all work. Thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you, sir. Does any of the other council have a comment? Well, again, congratulations on the three of you, and it's interesting about respect is that if you ever heard someone say about someone, maybe they don't even care for in other respects, but they said, you know, I don't like this person, but I have a lot of respect for them. So it's such a high character aspect that, that it just, it can kind of go above and beyond the, the normal, you know, traits that people think of. So I, I think that you guys are well deserved, and thank you, those of two of you that are teachers for all the work you've done over this last year.
For sure.
All right, without further ado, do we have a?
Mayor, Gail Weber has her hand raised.
I'm sorry, Gail did not see that, go ahead.
Well, well, actually, it's, actually, it's Ralph.
Okay.
We're, we were really set up in a remote location, and we're sorry that the video didn't work out. We actually had this, the certificates, the awards, but just wanted to thank you guys for the time, put us on the agenda, and hopefully you can still hear us.
Yes, sir, and thank you for what you do, Ralph, and Ms. Weber, and Ms. Magga. Thank you for all the members of the coalition for, you know, keeping this going, this great thing that Sue and Barbara started, so thank you. Do we have any public comment on this particular item? I don't know if we do comment on presentations, but I'll ask anyways.
No written comment.
Rose?
No other hands raised online.
All right, so we'll move on to item E, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. We'll start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Nothing to report tonight.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Papino.
I don't have anything to report either.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
I think to report at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Lozano?
Yeah, I, I do have a little bit of report, little bit to report. We had several SACOG meetings and other things going on. Just real briefly, I attended the SACOG meeting on August nineteenth, there's another one this week. The, the item that I reported on before, AB fourteen oh one, it appears that there was some information that either I misunderstood or wasn't presented, wasn't presented the way that, that I, that I thought it was. And so AB fourteen oh one was the reducing the amount of parking required by developers and to, for development. Now, if you guys remember that conversation, my notes, I wrote down that, that their city local control would not be an issue. Well, it is, and so SACOG decided not to take a position on that bill in light of the potential, at least, of losing local control, the city branch Cordova, obviously, City Galt, me, and a couple other jurisdictions had an issue with it. And so the entire board decided not to take a position on it. So that was just one of the biggest ones. We also had a consumative CSD two-by-two meeting, and we formally invited Chief Rodriguez to come as our Chief of Fire to come in to one of our future council meetings to give us just kind of an update on all things Fire Department. And, and so we did have quite a bit of conversation around that. He gave us a presentation on some of the fires that were going on and the resources that we had from the Fire Department up in, at these fires, and at the, at that particular date, there were two engine companies, which is six people as well as some management staff filling in as PIOs and public information officers and, and command officers up there. They talked about the Giant Pumpkin Festival, which is going to happen this year in a one-day fashion, and so if you guys get an opportunity, it's the first Saturday in October, pretty cool event down there. The other thing, they talked to us a little bit about how they're addressing some of their lighting landscape district issues, and as you know, or as we all know, it's quite have been, been quite a topic of conversation for us down here as well, and is not unique to this area. So we did get some good information from them in terms of how they look at things, and I think the city managers had a follow-up meeting with them just to kind of figure out what, what some next steps would be for, for us. So that was, that was very positive. And then lastly, the SACOG. And then lastly, the Secog Policy and Information Committee on the 30th of August, we talked about regional teleworking. I'm just going to talk about that one. There was a lot more going on. But I also brought up the fact that, you know, we can continue to talk about teleworking and promoting it from a regional perspective in terms of having people not commute and use redways and fuel and, and all that stuff. But the, one of the things I brought up that I didn't want to forget is how the promotion of teleworking will affect local businesses where these jobs are, are located, and, and, you know, we're not going to be able to control whether a company decides to have an office building with office people in it, but, but we can control how, you know, what we provide that the, the community in terms of telework assistance and things like that, and at least be cognizant and, and find the data that shows how it's affecting our economies. So we'll move forward with that. Just one last thing related to Secog, the Green Means Go campaign that I've talked about for several years in reducing, helping reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 19%, which is connected to that RENA number. It looks like that the state has put in 34, I'm sorry. The state has budgeted money to address some of these issues, and the Secog region is going to get about $34 million of money to help with a different trap transit and housing issues. And so the good thing is, is that it's going to really affect how we, how we mitigate some of the state mandates. Not saying that the state's putting money where their mouth is, but, but it's a little baby step in that direction. So that is a result of the region really doing some, some hardcore advocacy at the state Capitol and with our local leaders. The Secog representatives have been texting, emailing, you know, contacting by telephone, assembly members and state, state senators, and, and so it looks like that's working out. So that's all I have. I won't go on with all the rest of it, but I appreciate you all taking the time and listening to, to my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Thank you for all the good information. As for myself, I don't have any, any report on any official appointments or things that I've done since the last meeting. So without further ado, we'll move on to item F, our information consent calendar. It is recommended that items one through six be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. Item one is going to be the minutes of our regular meeting of August 17th, 2021. Item two is going to be to receive and file warrants for a period ending August 27th, 2021. Item number three is going to be the award of construction contract for Walker Park Phase Two Improvements CIP 619B. Item four is going to be contract for consult, consult, consultant service, sorry, regarding communication and community engagement services for fiscal sustainability. Item five is going to be the award of construction contract for 2021 pavement rehabilitation program, project CIP 57I. And last, item six, ordinance of the city council of the city of Galt authorizing the levy of special taxes in a community facilities district, including certain annexation territory identified as annexation number four, Cordosa two into the city of Galt Community Facilities District number 2020-1, Public Services.
And make a motion to approve items F1 through F6.
All right. Moved by Councilmember Lozano.
Who's second?
Second by Vice Mayor Sandu. We have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Vanderburg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Consent calendar approved 5-0. Moving on to item G, scheduled matters, notice of public hearing. Our first item is going to be our draft 2021 through 2029 housing element, our agenda report tonight by Mr. Craig Hoffman. Craig?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, and I do have a presentation for you tonight. Is everyone seeing that? Do we have that?
We're seeing a dark screen. There we go.
Oh, is that up now?
Yes.
Okay. So tonight's housing element, this is here if I could get. Tonight's public hearing, we're looking for the city council to receive a presentation tonight, open a public hearing and receive any comments. And upon closing the public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the 2021, 2029 Housing Element Initial Study and negative declaration and the 2021 to 2029 Housing Element. I know the, the city councils received this presentation before. So what I'm really looking to, to do is reconfirm the council, when we started this process, wanted to see a very public, very open and very transparent process. And so we started this journey back in December with an overview process to the city council. In January, we gave a presentation to the Planning Commission in regard to housing needs assessment. In February, we reviewed constraints to housing development. In March, we had a housing site inventory. And then also in March, we gave that same presentation to the city council to confirm the sites that we would be reviewing. In April, we had a review of the draft housing element before the Planning Commission. This was a public hearing, and this draft would ultimately be forwarded on up to the council for a May 4th review of this draft document. Again, another public hearing, and we sent that document on up to HCD to begin a 60-day review. Let's see. We received the comments from HCD in July and began a process to move this document forward for an approval. In August 12th, we had a public hearing before the Planning Commission, and they made a recommendation to the city council to approve the document. On August 17th, we had a public hearing study session before the city council to review the housing element and environmental document. And at that meeting, after about an hour and a half of discussion, the direction was to bring this document back to the council for approval. Again, we've tried to have a very open and transparent process. This housing element has been noticed in the Galt Herald newspaper. There have been five newspaper articles written on the housing element process. The city manager biweekly update has had at least four or five updates on the public meetings. We have a website that allows for people to sign up. We've had 11 people sign up. And we also have a webpage dedicated to the process with all the information. So again, staff has made sure that we've had a very open, transparent process for the public to participate. And the cornerstone of this housing element has been our site selection. The council made very clear upfront. Take a look at the sites that we had available, and if we needed to do any upzones or increase any, any housing sites, that we made sure that they were dispersed throughout the community. And the one site that we came up with, and that's number 18, it's this star right in the middle, was an area that would not divide an existing community, but was part of an area that was maybe a new area, kind of someplace that was dispersed, and again, wouldn't be within an existing community or neighborhood area where you may have folks that could honestly say, hey, I bought in this area and I didn't expect to see this. So we, we tried to make sure that that took place. Again, for the council, staff's here to answer any questions before I do turn it back over to here. Let's see. Uh oh, did I lose my image? Before. Yes, the PowerPoint's gone. All right, I'm back. Before I do turn this back over to the council, again, the expectation was that we'd make this as public as we could with the constraints of COVID, but we really have tried to reach out to the public. And before I turn it back over to you, Mayor, and the council, there's a few thank yous I need to make. Your planning commission spent a tremendous amount of time with this, really gave this document a thorough review and really took it to heart before they made a recommendation up to this council to approve this document. They went through this document. They've spent a lot of time with it. I'd like to thank our consultant, Ben Tier Harnish. Jim Harnish has a 35-year relationship with this community. And the jump from what I would call, call the, the fifth cycle housing element to the sixth cycle that we're dealing with now, it was quite a jump, and to have their expertise, thank you, Jim Harnish, Ryan Lester, Rick Rust, and Amy Yang. They really helped guide this process. And finally, I'd like to thank the city planning staff, Stacy Schaefer and Kristen Betts for their effort to really review this document. But tonight, I'm here to present this document to you for your review and approval. So if there's any questions that I may answer, as well as Jim Harnish is with me tonight as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. I do have a follow-up question for Mr. Harnish. I think, I can't remember if it was he or another one of the, his constituents that I asked this last time. But if you recall, if you were here, I presented a question that I don't think got an answer, maybe you guys just didn't know, was why, why it seemed like it was very inconsistent with the different cities? Why was Galt chosen to add such a large percentage of houses compared to all the other cities in Sacramento County? Was there ever a determination of why that was?
Jim, you're?
You're on mute, sir. There you go.
Yeah. We actually didn't do a comparative review. From what we understand, the, the real allocations are based on population and employment projections. And so the, not so much available land, but what the expected growth is. And so I would say that the expectation or the projections were based on the expectation for Galt's growth. But we didn't look, didn't do research specifically comparative research to look at Folsom, Ileton, and the other cities in, in the county.
I mean, it was all, I'm just speaking as far as being relevant, the 1900 and change housing that we were required in this cycle was the percentage of what that means to our current housing was, was much higher than almost every city in Sacramento County, with the exception of one, which was only like two percentage points higher than us. So I just thought it was very, I don't know, I just, it's kind of frustrating. I speak on my
I think in that conversation we had, I think I said that it was a mystery to me. We're working on a community in Napa County that has a 900% increase in the arena from the fifth of the sixth cycle. And it's a community that has fire hazards and water availability issues, and it's puzzling to me how the, the Department of Finance comes up with these projections. And then, you know, the, the HCD provides them to each of the regions, and then in our case, Secog has to take those broad numbers and allocate them each of your counties. So it's a fairly complex allocation process, and I frankly have to admit ignorance on the details of it. So I can't, I can't answer beyond that.
No problem.
Mayor, I would just add, you know, looking at this process and working through it, I don't know that equity and fairness are two of the words that I would describe in this process. I think what we've done is we've done the best job we can to present a document that meets our obligations and to do it as painlessly as we could. And so I think that's the document that you have before you is staff has spent a great deal of time, the planning commission's spent a deal, great deal of time. And I know this council's spent a great deal of time looking at this. I think we have a document that we can implement over the next eight years. But fair is not the term I'd use to describe this housing element.
Well said, Craig. Does any of our council members have any comments on this particular item? Mr. Papinow, go ahead.
Yeah, just no questions, just comment. I wanted to thank Craig and everybody involved, especially the Planning Commission, and especially for the outreach through this whole process because it really was effective. As I saw people start to understand what a, the housing element is and isn't, and what it actually reflects as far as true potential growth and development timelines. So you, you did a good job of, you know, really defining that, as you just said, we're meeting our requirements and we're doing what's, you know, what we have to do. But, you know, while still, you know, letting people understand that, you know, the, the growth timeline is a realistic thing, whereas the element may not be. So thank you all.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Sandu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no question, but I'd like to thank you, Mr. Hoffman, his hard work, his staff hard work, and his consultant. I know we all discussed a lot of, there is no question left, and again, thank for him gave the council four, five times to review this element. I know even some of the thing I don't like it, but that's the statement. I thank you, Mr. Hoffman. I'm going to support tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Any other counsel? Well, I would like to say one more time, I, I do appreciate all the hard work, Craig. For you personally, I appreciate your approach to this as a good example of all the other things that you've done where you kind of bring things. You know, we don't, you don't force feed things to us. You present things in a very neutral manner. You're really good about doing your study sessions and, and, you know, for us to really understand things. And, and I, I just want to say I appreciate you doing that all the times you've, with everything you've done up to this point, Craig, but especially with this. And, 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 you know, I say this with no disrespect to all the staff that has worked really hard on this, the planning commissioners who've seen this many times and everybody. But just so frustrating that we're forced to accept something and just, you know, comply with something that I personally feel as a representative of the people of Galt, don't like being told how we have to grow and, and, and what manner we have to grow. I mean, if we're going to grow these 1900 homes in the next eight years without being forced, possibly. And obviously, we've been actually very lucky that we didn't have to do a lot of work to be compliant. We already had to have that, as you mentioned, Craig, kind of laid out already. So luckily, we weren't like, you know, the city that Mr. Harnish mentioned in Napa, where we have to go 900%. But so all due respect to everybody involved, and thank you for doing a thorough job on all this. But again, I just want to stress, you know, my complete frustration with, you know, the state of California or leaders above just completely just handing down what is totally unreasonable and taking local control completely out of the picture, and it's just frustrating. So I just wanted to state that. Councilmember Lozano, you have your hand up?
I do. And, and I just want to point out that I, I agree. I agree with the, the fact that I believe the state hands down these, these mandates, and we have to comply or be banished to the these, these mandates and we have to comply or be banished to the whatever, you know, city jail that they put us in, right? But the upside is this, you know, we have to provide an opportunity for the development to happen. We don't have to develop it. And if you look back, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, I asked staff to pull it, I don't know, five or six months ago, and we actually had a discussion here at council. If you look back at the number of permits pulled and the actual houses built, that it grossly falls below the projected growth rate of this city. And in my mind, that's how we can, that's what we do to keep our local control, right? If people are, if, if we have to provide an opportunity, which we have through our general plan for years and years and years, for people to develop, yet we have all these infill properties that are not developed. There's a reason why that's happening. I don't know what the answer is to that, but I will say this, we have done, and I make this argument with other jurisdictions as well as our own constituents, we've done what we can to, for commercial and residential infill with, you know, different decisions by this council to help promote that. And I, and I think that at the end of the day, we won't get near what, what the, the sixth cycle has, is providing for us to do. It doesn't take the monkey off the back of the state, though. And so, so I just keep that in mind as we move forward. You know, you hear people say all the time, oh, my gosh, you know, we're growing at such a horrible rate. Well, if you look at the numbers, we're, we're, we're growing at a much less rate than, than, than what has been projected for years. And so I think that's a, a piece of local control. And I, and I think that we take that little sliver and do what we can to, to extend that out. So just my thoughts. And again, thank you to, to staff and, and certainly the planning commission. Oh, my gosh. I know I've watched a couple of their meetings where they've heard it, heard this item. And, and staff, thank you for all you did to, to make this as painless as possible. But I would agree that fair or equity in terms of jurisdictions with, is never, never words that you would use for a housing element, just, it's just crazy. So anyhow, thank you. And thank all the staff for, for everything that they did on, on coming up with some creative ways to, to meet the legal obligations that we needed to, that fit our city. So thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lozano. And I, and I totally agree with all you said. And, 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 yeah, it just, it just, it's like, we know we might, and again, this council has been very receptive of growth. You know, we've, we've, we've actually approved several infill developments, which I think are really good for the community. And we, we understand that some, some growth is, is necessary. And, but it just goes back to like, you know, it seems like under this, you know, all this new legislation, that's just like a tidal wave that it's just saying, you know, if someone comes in, we just don't have, we're not going to have the power to say, you know what, we just don't really like that housing development. I mean, if it conforms with zoning and it fits what we've set the house for, even if we don't like it, it's going to be difficult for us to say no. And, and that is just the one thing that just, I'm sure, and all of us, I know, are not happy about. You know, taking the powers that the voters have put in our hands to, to guide, you know, the city, whether we're going to grow that much or not on our own, at least we have that say. And, and with this kind of stuff, we don't. And I just feel like it's going to get worse as time goes on. But again, staff did a fabulous job. Thank you, Craig, for everything you've done. And everybody up to this point to, to make us all be good little boys and girls for the state of California. So I appreciate that, Craig. Anything from anybody else before we move on? Do we have a, any public comment on this matter, Ms. Hubert?
We do have to open the public hearing.
I'm sorry, you're right. And that was what I was going to do next. All right, we're now going to open the public hearing and receive comments. Do we have any written comments this evening?
No written comments.
Okay. Do we have any hands raised online?
We currently do not have any hands raised online.
Okay. That, without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And now I'll be looking for a motion to adopt a resolution approving the twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-nine housing element initial study slash negative declaration and the twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-nine housing element.
Someone. Second.
All right, moved by, I'm sorry, I got the, the motion was by Councilmember Lozano and seconded by Councilmember Vandenberg. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papino.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
No. Motion approves four to one. Thank you again, Craig. Thank you all, staff and everybody that worked so hard for this. We appreciate that.
All right, thank you, counsel.
All right, moving on to our next item, H, regular calendar. From our city manager's office, the subject is going to be the coronavirus COVID-nineteen update. Mr. Heinz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm here to give the September seventh, twenty-twenty-one update on COVID-nineteen. For this, for, we're going to present this, for those folks who haven't seen us present this, we're going to present the county's statistics first, followed by the city of Galt's statistics. The number of cases in Sacramento County has gone up thirteen percent since our last meeting on August the seventeenth. The number of deaths in Sacramento County as a result of COVID-nineteen has gone up eight percent since our last meeting on August seventeenth. In the city of Galt, the number of cases have increased by over three hundred, slightly over three hundred, or a nine percent increase. Fortunately, we haven't lost any souls in Galt to COVID-nineteen since the last meeting. Sacramento County Public Health, September second update, our daily case rate is currently at thirty-two-point-one. I was actually topping thirty-six percent at midweek last week, or thirty-six at midweek last week. Incorrectly stated it as a percent. But the daily case rate is thirty-two per one hundred thousand in population. And if you compare that to our last meeting, it was at thirty on August seventeenth. Sacramento County is currently averaging five deaths per day. In Sacramento County, hospitals are nearing capacity with four hundred and forty-three hospitalizations and, and thirteen being children. In the past thirty days, the average age of death from COVID-nineteen was sixty-four years old, compared to seventy-six years old for the entire pandemic. And the kids are making up about twenty percent of the current case rates, likely due to the kids returning to school. But again, it's only likely. Sixty-seven-point-three percent of all eligible Californians are fully vaccinated and ten-point-one percent are partially vaccinated. Fifty-two-point-five percent of eligible Sacramento County residents are fully vaccinated. And here's some uplifting news, fifty-five percent of eligible residents in Galt have been fully vaccinated. That is up from fifty-one percent on eight-seventeen, our last council meeting. Vaccine locations in Sacramento County can be, can be found at the attached website for Sac County Vaccine. The city continues to offer COVID-nineteen testing every Thursday from seven AM to twelve PM at the Chabola Center. Due to a nationwide shortage of rapid antigen tests, testing may soon revert back to the PCR test only, where you have to wait twenty-four to seventy-two hours for the results. On September second, four hundred and ninety total tests were administered at the Galt testing site, compared to two hundred and ninety-six on August nineteenth. So folks are coming in and getting their tests. And again, our testing locations are, can be found in the Sacramento region at Sac County Vaccine. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the presentation for this week.
You're on mute, Sean. Sorry, thank you. Thank you, Jay. Do we have any public comment, Ms. Hubert?
No comment.
Rose, do we have any hands raised online?
We have no hands raised online.
Okay. Any comments from council on this particular item? All right, if we had an item, I, communication, do we have any communication this evening?
Not this evening.
Okay, thank you. Next item is Jay from the city clerk's office. Subject is the Galt Youth Commission appoint student member Lauren Karen or Corinne? How do we say that?
I believe it's Karen.
Karen. Lauren Karen and administering the oath of office. Tina?
Okay, so the recommendation is to accept the student member appointment. Lauren Karen is selected by the Galt Youth Commission adult mentors. At the June fifteen, twenty-twenty-one city council meeting, city council accepted the four applications that were submitted with one returning student member leaving three vacancies. One application was received by Lauren Karen, who was interviewed and accepted by the adult mentors. The commission still has two student member vacancies at this time. Lauren is on the line if you have questions, but she is on the phone with no video. So after her appointment, her oath of office will be in person at the city clerk's office prior to the September thirteenth Galt Youth Commission meeting. So does counsel have any questions? Like I said, Lauren is on the line.
Lauren, would you like to say something?
I just wanted to say for allowing me to attend this meeting. City, I think it's really great that I can represent our youth.
Well, thank you. And I look forward to seeing you at the meetings. And, and thank you for your, your willingness to serve the community in the capacity that you are. Appreciate that, Lauren. Does any of the council members have any comment for Lauren or General Councilmember Vandenberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you, Lauren, for taking the opportunity to get involved. We need more people like you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Lozano, did you have your hand? Or did you lower it?
I was just going to make the motion to approve, but I'll wait until everyone else is done.
I think, does anybody else have a comment before we approve this appointment? No? Okay. All right. All right, looking for, do we actually need a motion to approve?
Yes.
No, it doesn't say that on the report here. Okay, looking for a motion to approve Ms. Lauren Cohen as a member of the Galt Youth Commission.
I, I make that motion to approve.
All right, moved by Councilmember Lozano. Seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papino.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi. Approved five to zero. Welcome aboard, Ms. Karen.
Thank you so much.
All right. Moving on to item K. I apologize for my, my lighting. It's not very good here. I'm having a hard time reading this. Item K, comments by staff. Mr. Heinz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I personally don't have any comments tonight. So let's go around the, the table here. Let's see if Community Development Director Craig Hoffman has any further comments.
Councilmembers, just one item. On September first, the LAFCO board did approve the Summerfield annexation. So that was adopted and the Simmerhorn Ranch project and the island annexations will be going to November third. But that was approved, and that's it for me. Thank you.
All righty, very good. Thank you, sir. Let's go with interim police chief, Rick Small.
I'm trying, hold on real quick. All right, my video doesn't want to start, so you're just going to have to hear me. Nothing for me, except I just want to thank everyone. Oh, there we go. I want to thank everyone. You, Mr. Heinz, the council, all the staff, and the entire community for their support during this time with the untimely death of Officer Greewall. It's been a, an honor serving in this community for my entire time here, but no more so than in the last few weeks, just with the amount of support we've received. So a big thank you to everyone for that.
Thank you, chief. Let's go with Public Works Director Mike Selling.
Thank you, Lauren. Yeah, just a couple of things I wanted to highlight tonight for the community upcoming events. Number one, this Thursday is the second workshop for the C Street Enhancement Project. And you may recall, probably about a month and a half ago, we had the prior workshop and we did a, a field walk out there so people could come and, and discuss what issues and whatnot they had. We've taken the feedback that we got at that time and refined it into a couple of alternatives that we want to present to the public and get some more feedback from them on. So that's this Thursday from six to seven-thirty. There'll be a brief presentation, probably around six-fifteen. So if you want to see that, you can come ahead of times and take a, take a moment to, to look at the alternatives and then hear the presentation. And then we'll have plenty of time afterwards to go over any questions or whatnot. So, and that'll be at the Chabola Center, again, six to seven-thirty this Thursday. You don't need to register, you can. But you don't need to, so feel free to come. The next one I want to remind folks on, you may have seen in the newsletter, is a couple more workshops regarding the groundwater sustainability plan. There are two scheduled on the sixteenth. Those are in person and more details to follow us to the location. The one is from three-thirty to five, and the second one, I believe, is from six-thirty to eight. So a couple of opportunities there in person coming up. And then there will be another virtual workshop for the groundwater sustainability plan on, that is on October sixth, and that will be six-thirty to eight-thirty. Again, that one will be virtual. And the comment period runs through October twentieth, so still plenty of time to, to review it and get any comments, ask your questions. So I want to make folks aware of that. And then lastly, on Cost Drive, we've got some work by contractor for the Cardoso Development. They are tying into the city sewer main on cost and are going to be needing to close the road as they bore underneath the railroad tracks. So the segment from Joy Drive west to this, near the city limits will be closed. And the dates are September thirteenth. We're looking at through the twenty-fourth potentially, so for a couple of weeks there. And, and just as a coincidental, the county is looking to do roadwork on Cost Road, basically further west out to Sergeant. So they are also looking at the same closure dates to do their roadwork. So just be advised that, that Cost Road will basically be closed in those limits from Joy out to the Sergeant Road. So plan accordingly, I guess, for your detours, that we signage up and whatnot for that. Hopefully, they'll get done sooner. But anyway, that's the tentative schedule at this point. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Selling. Let's go with Economic Development Manager Amy Mendez.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. I briefly just wanted to touch on some of the events that we have going on. I know that our Parks and Recreation Director is on vacation. And so in his absence, I did want to make sure that the community and council were aware that this Saturday, September eleventh, is our summer drive-in movie series at the Galt Market Grounds. And showing will be Disney Pixar film Soul. It'll be this Saturday coming up. Next Saturday, September eighteenth, is the last Sounds of Summer Concert Series at Veterans Field. That's featuring the Inner Soul Band playing R and B hits at that event on the eighteenth. And then our summer drive-in movie series concludes on September twenty-fifth with Peter Rabbit Two. So our Parks and Rec folks have been working hard to provide some family entertainment events in the community. And so I think this is a good opportunity for the community to get involved and bring their families out for some fun, hopefully, in some good weather as well. Also recently announced is the special edition Harvest Market coming to the Fourth Street Promenade on Saturday, October sixteenth. This event will include a pumpkin patch, live music, fall photos, artisan vendors, food trucks, and much more. This event will include a pumpkin patch, live music, fall photos, artisan vendors, food trucks and much more. It's also going to include a scarecrow scarecrow stroll with asking businesses and local organizations and residents to create their scariest or funniest scarecrows for the competition. Prizes will be awarded for first, second, and third place. And that will be coming up in October. There's also some Halloween events that'll be announced soon. So just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of some of these, you know, family events we have coming up within the next couple of weeks. And everything is posted on the city calendar on the front page of the website. So if you're looking for information, you can access it there and we'll push it out on social media as well. That's all I have.
So I have is that what you're saying? Okay, so if I walk in here and looked a little disheveled, you'll scarecrows. Alrighty, let's go with Human Resources Directors Stephanie Van Stee. Thank you, Amy.
I have no update this evening.
Thank you, thank you. Let's go with our city clerk, Tina Huber.
Nothing this evening.
All right, let's go with Administrative Department Executive Assistant Rose Roedacker.
Thank you. I have nothing tonight for the group.
Alrighty, Mr. Mayor, before I conclude, I just wanted to give the council and the public just a quick preview of some of the items that will be coming up in future agendas. We'll be bringing the the city's proposed ARPA plan to the council and meetings that are coming up. We'll also be looking at traffic issues, providing Traffic 101, just to educate the public on all the things necessary to place stop sign and various other traffic mitigation measures in place. We'll be providing that information in October. We'll also be addressing some council requests. Councilmember Vandenberg had a question about market operations on the weekends, and so we've done that analysis. We'll be bringing that before council soon. Councilmember Sandu had an inquiry about stop signs in certain areas and other council members have indicated that there may be some other areas where stop signs are needed, and so we'll be addressing that in October, October sort of our unofficial traffic month. But I wanted to sort of give the council and also the public a heads up as to some of the items that will be coming in in future meetings and some of the near future meetings. And that concludes my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. Just a quick question for the for the, I guess, for Amy or for Mr. Selling, is the the workshop for the C Street? Is that gonna be posted on the city's social media? Because I would like to share that. The one for Thursday?
Yeah, please. So Amy can probably give you more detail.
Yeah, we've been posting it out there. It's been posted on Facebook, on Instagram, on Nextdoor, and it's been in our Instagram stories and Facebook stories pretty much every day. We've also emailed it to everybody that attended. The last meeting has been invited. And then the business license listing that we had of email addresses, those were in sent email invitations. And phone calls were made to most of the businesses that front on the construction area. So they should have received a phone call invitation as well. So there's been quite a bit of outreach and hoping that we can get a good number of attendees there on Thursday night. So and we'll continue to push that out for the rest of the week.
Thank you. I appreciate that's over and above. Okay, well, we'll move on to item L, comments by city council members and future agenda items. We'll start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Tonight with a heavy heart. I would like to say it's been a rough couple of weeks in regard to tragic accident with our police officer. There has been an overwhelmingly amount of support in our community from everyone. We will never forget all the officer Greewall did for all our community. He will forever be in our hearts. We will honor and remember him forever. I'm glad to hear Officer Herrera was released from the hospital and can continue her road to recovery from the comfort of her home. Everyone involved and affected Galt Police Department, family members, friends and community members. Our thoughts and prayer are with you. Officer Greewall, even he is not with us, thank you for your service. May God rest his soul in peace. Thank you.
Councilmember Papino.
Yeah, echo the Vice Mayor's comments rather than repeat them. And just thanks to everybody in the community for the support of the the Graywall and Herrera families as well as the Police Department.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Very well said, Vice Mayor Sandu. I echo the sentiments completely. Seriously, surely it came straight from your heart and I was very glad to see the community support our officers. It was also very good to hear the news about Officer Herrera and I would appreciate getting updates from about her condition when appropriate. As, sorry. We spoke earlier about planning a housing element and there's a community, a community planning initiative that's trying to be put on the ballot. This will help put zoning control back into local communities. It will undo some of the things that SB three thirty, SB thirty five, SB nine and SB ten have done to take control away from local communities. So I ask that you please look out for that, support it. Put it on social media. I think it still needs a lot of signatures just to get on the ballot, but I'd like to see it there. Let's just put it that way. I also have been poking around about putting a community garden on the east side of town. The location at Elk Hills and Walnut Avenue is a very nice location. I think there's enough community support for it. It's an empty lot next to a well-used park. So I think it's like automatic advertising. If the staff could look into, you know, initial costs for bringing that up to speed, you know, of course, with council support. So I guess I don't know if that requires mayor, but if I have to officially ask, I imagine. And then a couple of business owners has asked about lighting the Galt Water Tower and they offered to pay for it. The city just needs to look into how they can do it. So I'm looking for support on both those items.
Well, I'll speak first. I think the lighting, I've never heard that idea, but I mean, it's kind of strange. It actually has never been lit. I think that would be kind of neat if it's feasible or possible. So I mean,
They're hoping to do with their hope, excuse me, I'm sorry. They're hoping to do with, you know, multiple colors. So for certain times, years, certain events, it could match those things.
I would be in favor of looking into that. Is any other council on that particular item? Would be interested in seeing what that would involve? Could be willing to hear their proposal should they want to bring one forward. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Heinz, I mean, is that something we could have staff bring back to us at some point? I'm sure it's not urgent and but I think it's a great idea. We could and I'd love to see what that would entail.
Okay, as Councilmember Papino mentioned, we welcome the proposal from the organization or the the businesses that have proposed, Councilmember Vandenberg. And we'll be happy to take a look at and and do an analysis of it and bring it back, bring it before the council. So Councilmember Vandenberg, if you can ask those folks to get in touch with me and I'd love to see a proposal. And regarding the community garden, do we also have the same level of support for staff's research into that feasibility as well?
I I am, I have seen that location and I have spoke to some people that live in that area and it seems like there's a, there's a great interest in it. Obviously, it's next to the fire station. So there obviously I would like to see again what it entails, how that would affect them, whatever. But I I I like the location and I think just the idea of a garden on that side is a is a great idea. So yes, I I would support that.
Okay. Need one more.
Again, I'd be willing to hear a proposal brought forward.
Very good, very good. All right, so staff will look into the feasibility of the community garden. And Councilmember Vandenberg, if you can put those folks in touch with me, tell them I'd love to see a proposal. I think the only complication there is what kind of lighting will happen at one particular time? Because we've got a lot of different opinions in our town and so we have to agree on what the lighting patterns will be at particular times. But other than that, I'd love to see the proposal.
I'll work on getting everything together. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Councilmember Lozano, you had a question?
Yeah, I do have a question. In terms of the community garden, when when Councilmember Vandenberg was describing it, I I was thinking of a different piece of property. Where where are we talking about?
It's directly due south of the Fire Department on the corner of Elk Hills and Walnut.
If you
It's a, it's a dead lot. It's an abandoned lot right now, owned by the city.
So current south of the canal that runs south of the Fire Department. North of the canal.
Yeah.
If you, if you, if you turn, if you turn south onto Elk Hills off of Walnut and then there's the, you can actually, you to turn it into the Fire Department, like where the trucks would go back in, they turn right in, it's just past that. It's a little strip of property that is right adjacent to the pathway. If you were to walk into Community Park on the back way, it it basically is right along that pathway. It's a big plot of dirt right there.
Okay, I walk that regularly, so that's why I was asking. All right.
Just for council's information, we'll be analyzing the the community garden using the model for the month, the community garden that we currently currently exist within the city, which I believe is pretty much run and supported by community volunteers with very little input from the city financially. So we'll be, we'll be looking to to duplicate that model as well. So I just wanted, in case there was any concern about that, we've got a, we've got a mold that we can follow.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, Councilmember Lozano, you're next.
Yeah, I just want to echo what the Vice Mayor said in regards to Officer Greewall and Officer Herrera. I won't go through that again. But I will say that not surprising, I want to thank the community for all their support. Again, not very surprised by it. But I want to also thank the police officers and and actually all the employees of the PD who have still come to work every day having lost a coworker like that. I don't think that many people and many types of professions can appreciate still having to come to work and being back on the street protecting us as we sleep at night. And so I wanted to thank them and then all of the city staff that have rallied around the Police Department and and the council during this hard time and really appreciate everything they've done as well. Just on a couple of different notes, I want to thank the staff. Here recently, I was actually had a meeting with City Manager Lorenzo, City Manager Heinz today. And I mentioned to him that I really like the way the staff reports are being written specifically as it relates to construction contracts. There there's an item in there at each of them that I've seen here recently that outlines the bids that are opened and the costs that and 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 the bid amounts for every step of the project by by company and then by total total cost. And it makes it just much easier to read. We're not having to flip pages back and forth to figure that out. And so thank you to Mike Selling and and everyone else that puts puts energy into that and and your staff for for making that very clear. Just a couple of other things. Got to attend the Walker Park Check presentation by Assembly Member Cooper and there were, I think we were all but one was there. But everybody planned on being there, like all the council and appreciate that support and appreciate the support for of Assembly Member Cooper once again securing some money so we can take care of Walker Park. So and then had the opportunity, the Vice Mayor and I went to the Consumer CSC Fire Graduation. And they graduated twenty four cadets, so twenty four new firefighters in the system and and ironically, at the candlelight vigil on that following Monday, I happened to see one of the graduates. It was actually his first shift ever. And it was kind of, it was kind of cool seeing him out there and he was out there with one of our retired firefighters at one point who had worked in Galt forever and the station that this new firefighter was assigned to. And so it's kind of, it was kind of a good conversation to hear and and be a part of where, you know, the the retired person was giving the brand new person on his first day some advice and it was, it was, it was pretty cool. And then lastly, just the community support with the the vigils and that have been put on and I want to thank the the city community for the vigil last week at the Capitol. It was very, very well done. I think we were almost all, most all of us were there as well and and just, just a good showing and it was nice to hear the district attorney make some comments and of course, Assembly Member Cooper as well as Supervisor Sue Frost. And so there was a lot of support out there for us and 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 people, people, people care and and they they they're, they are keeping our, keeping our community in their prayers and and thoughts. And so I just wanted to pass that on. And I think that's it. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Lozano. Yeah, I as well, obviously reiterate everything that everyone has said so far. I don't think that, I don't think that any of us, when we took this, when we ran for these these positions ever thought that, I mean, although it could happen, but it just really didn't ever seem to cross your mind that you would be in these positions when something like this happens. So it's, it's very difficult and I'm sure that interim chief Small, just to be in his short tenure as interim chief, to have something so huge to his department. I know it must be really hard, so thank you for, you know, your tenure during that time. And again, about the, you know, the community support that everybody's mentioned, it's been, I'm not surprised by it at all. But it's just, you still kind of think, wow, you know, it's even even on short notice. One of the vigils that I attended was was put together by somebody in the community pretty much last minute and to be there and see the amount of people that turned up and all the things that were said and and all the support and all the you know, the things we're seeing around the community with the with the ribbons and the, you know, all of the things that are showing support, not just for the families, not just for Officer Greewell's family and and for Officer Herrera and her family, but just for the, for the department and and for our first responders, because, you know, it's hit all of them, you know, they they they're a tight-knit group and for the ones that were on scene that night, I know one of them who is a close acquaintance of mine and, you know, to talk to him, it 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 hurts all of them. So I think, you know, again, it doesn't surprise me because Galt, that's how we are here and but I'm glad that in the in the bigger picture of what's going on with law enforcement community in this country, that the city of Galt, the people of this town just show up and just show their overwhelming love and support. So again, my condolences to the Graywall family for your loss. And thank you for your, for his service and to Officer Herrera. We were all wishing you a speedy recovery and I'm sure that everyone in the community is going to continue their prayers for you and and I would look forward to updates when they're available. And I'm sure they'll be, we'll be all looking forward to to seeing her again, face to face when she's, you know, through her recovery and able to come out and people can show the love, you know, firsthand. So she's a strong, she's a strong person. And so you can only imagine what it's like to go through something like that. So on on the note with the Police Department, I would like to welcome Officer Kelly Doricott. I just saw that post that we have a new hire. So I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing her name appropriately, but welcome, Kelly. Thank you for your willingness to serve Galt. So thank you for that. And Chief Small, do you have any information on that since I brought it up? I saw you come on with your video there.
No, that was a, that was a pretty good pronunciation of the name. That was good.
Thank you, sir. With that, again, I would like to ask the community, everybody's watching, you know, keep, keep Officer Herrera in your prayers and be mindful of those that are serving us, keeping us safe. So without further ado, I will adjourn the meeting, seven thirty-five PM. Good night.